Call to order. Good evening. My name is Cindy Water and this is the Napa Valley Unified School District Board of Education and the Napa Valley College Board of Trustees. The NVUSD Board of Education and the Napa Valley College Board of Trustees are holding a special joint meeting tonight, and we invite participation either remotely or in person. Directions on how to participate via Zoom are available at nvusd.org/board. Interpretation in Spanish is available for tonight's virtual board meeting. Our interpreters are Francisco Mesa and Faviola Valencia. One of the interpreters will now translate the directions on our English channel so our Spanish-speaking families may hear the instructions.
Buenas tardes. La interpretación en español está disponible para la reunión virtual de la junta directiva de esta noche. Para acceder a la interpretación desde un computador, haga clic en el icono de interpretación en la parte inferior de la subpantalla desde la aplicación Zoom. En un dispositivo móvil, haga clic en el botón que dice More o más en la parte inferior de su pantalla y elija la interpretación en el idioma dentro de la aplicación Zoom. Este es un canal separado que le permitirá escuchar la traducción del inglés al español simultáneamente. Gracias. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, roll call. Can we please start with an attendance roll call for the Napa Valley Unified School District Board of Education from Vera Morales, Executive Assistant?
Yes. Student Board Member Bancole.
Present.
Trustee Water.
Present.
Trustee Reiser.
Present.
Trustee Chu.
Present.
Trustee Gracia.
Present.
Trustee Jankowicz.
Present.
Trustee Hart.
Present.
Trustee Gonzalez-Morris.
Present.
Four and present. Thank you.
Thank you. Can we now conduct an attendance roll call from Kathryn Kittel, Napa Valley College Manager from the Office of the Superintendent President and Board Services?
Student trustee Alejandro Martinez is not present tonight. Trustee Kishinev.
Here.
Trustee Deluna, I believe, is absent. Trustee Rios.
Here.
Trustee Baker.
Here. Hi, Kathryn.
Hi there. Trustee Dodd.
Present.
Trustee Olson.
Present.
And Trustee Iverson.
Present.
Thank you, and we do have a quorum.
And thank you. Next, we'll have the flag salute by Napa Valley College Board President Iverson.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, an announcement. This meeting is livestreamed and recorded via Zoom and will be archived on the district YouTube channel. For a detailed review of any meeting agenda item, the archived video can be referenced on the district's webpage at nvusd.org. The process for public comment can also be found on the district's webpage. Before we proceed with the approval of the agenda, I would like all of the board members from NVUSD and NVC to participate in tonight's votes for agenda approval and adjournment as a collective. Approval of agenda. May I get a motion to approve the agenda?
Motion to approve.
A second.
Okay. Motion from trustee Gracia and a second from trustee Jankowicz. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. The motion passes. And now we have public comments. Do we have a comment from Bruce Ketron of Napa?
Thank you, President Iverson. Thank you, President Iverson. Thank you, President Superintendent Allen. Thank you, President Sette, and all trustees.
And when we had our first student trustees, I commend this meeting of the joint committee. I will do it for a personal reason. Is that when I graduated my school, when I was in my senior high school, the high school had in the gymnasium a registration at the community college, and I attended and graduated from the community college, then had a chance to go to Santa Barbara Hastings Law School. In midlife, I took a degree from another public school called the University of, from the University of London, from the London School of Economics. I'm a big believer in public education, and I know how essential it is for people to cooperate. I stand in gratitude. For 12 years, I worked on getting the armory turned over to the school district where it should have been. I commend what the school district has done to it. I consider it a community asset for feud services and emergencies. I just have to say how difficult it was to get. I think maybe if we had joint meetings, that might have assisted. But the other item is that this makes possible the cooperation which is essential, and I hope that we can get more students, especially students of disadvantage, to go on to the college. I encourage all to participate in scholarships, where I now, as a trustee emeritus of the college for 12 years, I now get to serve with the Napa Valley College Foundation. I hope all of our students can go on to further education, whether it be in academia, or in training, or in some sort of life experiences. Thank you for gathering.
Thank you. Thank you. And my name is President Cindy Water, and I'm so excited today for our first board meeting of the Napa Valley Unified School District Board of Education and Napa Valley College Board of Trustees. And I really can't believe we've never done this before. You know, this is a historic occasion. Don't the chills just run up your spine? And what I want to thank, I'd like to thank Mr. Ketron Bruce, who I've known him for years, for his service on the foundation. And I wanted to tell Dr. Powell and the rest of the board members that, you know, I personally adore Napa Valley College because it gave my feckless son a second chance at a college career. And, you know, he went on and graduated summa from UC Santa Cruz, got a master's degree, and is today a high school teacher in Cambridge. And so many people are given second chances, first chances, third chances, all kinds of chances. It's a, you are running a wonderful community asset. I want to thank you so much for coming today. And I was thinking, President Iverson, maybe, you know, your board could introduce yourselves to us and tell us what district you represent and how long you served.
Thank you, Trustee Waters. It's a wonderful evening, and I'm happy to see this happening. I was a student class of 2000 at Napa High School with trustee Gonzalez, so to be on this side of the campus is different. So I look forward to a productive meeting. I am trustee for District Four. I've been on the board now for 10 years. I'll turn it over to my colleague.
Hi, trustees. I'm Jenny Olson, and I am a trustee in my first term, second year, serving District Five.
My name is Jeff Dodd. It's great to be here. Thank you to all our staff and administrators for planning. I know it's not easy to kind of get out of our normal routine. I represent District One.
Yes, that's me.
Three. We'll go with three.
Three.
Three. Numbers, numbers, but I know where the boundaries are, okay? And I know one of my favorite constituents is President City Water.
Thank you. Thank you.
I'm Jennifer Baker, a former NVUSD employee, and I have a, my older son just completed his high school career here last year, and I have a younger son who will be starting New Tech next fall. So you haven't got rid of me. But I am representing Area One and have been on the board. This is my eighth year.
I'm Rafael Rios. I've been on the board now, this is my 12th year, and I represent District Seven.
My name is Jason Kishinev, and as the real trustee for Area Three, I object to Jeff Dodd's trying to claim American Canyon for himself.
The main thing is you're here. Well, and now this board will introduce themselves, and we'll begin with our student trustee.
My name is Mastura Bancole, and I am a senior at American Canyon High School, and I am the alternate student board member, and I'm so happy to be here. Thank you.
I am Elba Gonzalez-Morris. I am trustee for District Area Six, and I have been on the board since 2016, so quite a bit. And good to be here with you all. And it's a, I agree, the chills did go up and down because I think it's great for educational institutions to be role models for this. How about that?
Hi, my name is Juliana Hart. I represent Area Seven. This is my beginning of my second year, so like at the same time as Jenny, and just enjoying being part.
My name is Robyn Jankowicz. I am trustee for Area One, and I have been on the board seven years going on eight.
David Gracia. I'm for Area Five, and I have been on the board, I think this is my sixth year now.
Hi, I'm Lisa Chu, and I represent Area Two, which includes American Canyon, and this is my fourth year.
My name is Eve Reiser. I am in my fourth year as well, and I represent Area Four, which also includes American Canyon, but on the western side of Highway 29.
And I am Cindy Water, and this is my sixth year, and like trustee Dodd, I represent downtown. I'm Area Three.
Let the record reflect. Sorry, President. I am District Two, and we just redistricted last year, right?
It's very confusing.
That's a little slack. Thank you.
Yeah. The NVUSD and NVC partnership and the implementation of strategic initiatives. First, we will hear from Dr. Powell, Superintendent President of Napa Valley College, and Dr. Rosanna Masetti, Superintendent of the Napa Valley Unified School District, who will set the stage for tonight's informative presentation and explain why we are here tonight as joint boards within the local education community. After presentation.
You're good there.
Okay.
Good evening, President Water, President Iverson, members of the NVUSD Board, members of the NVC Board, and members of the community. Tonight's joint board meeting of our two organizations is, as was mentioned before, an historic one, as it's the first time our districts have come together in such a way. While the California Master Plan for Higher Education denotes community colleges as one of the three public systems of higher education, practically speaking, community colleges draw from our colleagues in the K-12 system for our governance and funding structures. My NVC trustees, you owe the existence of your positions to the modeling of our local governance, control, and autonomy on the system which existed in the K-12 districts for many years prior. The intentionality in this decision was clear. Community colleges should be responsive to local needs and informed by trustees who represent their local communities, rather than the centralized systems of governance we see in the CSU and the UC. Our shared history highlights a contemporary shared objective. K-12 and community college districts must work together to reestablish seamless transitions for our students. The delineation between our systems, while important for many reasons, nonetheless creates gaps in access for students that have for many years worked against student matriculation, particularly for those students who are most marginalized and historically underrepresented in higher education. We are here tonight to boldly state that these systemic gaps have not well-served our students and that we will close them. In providing our secondary school students access to college courses and in streamlining the transition from NVUSD to NVC, we are ensuring our students are well-equipped to succeed in the classroom and in life. We are demystifying higher education for first-generation college students and their families. We are reducing the cost of obtaining college degrees for our low-income students, and we are proactively addressing disparities in college matriculation based on factors such as race and gender. I have both the honor and privilege of working beside Dr. Masetti in this effort, a partner who is as tireless in her work as she is committed to principles of student success, equity, and innovation. I invite you tonight to learn more about our shared work and the future of this most important of strategic partnerships. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Dr. Powell, for an incredible opening. I could not have said it better, and I will not say it better because that was so well-stated. I do just want to affirm and align with so much of what you shared. I also want to take a moment to welcome the NVC trustees to our boardroom for this historic evening, which we believe is the first of a series of meetings. So no one wants to add to a board calendar, but I think that this is well worth our time and effort. I appreciated the moment that Dr. Powell and I discussed and committed to ensuring that this joint board meeting would take place. It's not the fact that we're able to operationalize an idea that has been discussed, I think, for a long time, sort of loosely between the two organizations, but it's the idea about this, it is the idea being that this joint meeting is occurring between these two institutions really about the fact that we're holding the meeting serving as both a signal and a symbol in our community. It's a signal to the broader community that we have formally established and are actively working on strengthening a more effective partnership that is going to benefit our students, the young people of the Napa Valley. Additionally, it's a symbol of what an effective partnership that is mutually beneficial, driven by data, and completely student-centered can potentially accomplish for young people. I look forward to tonight's meeting being the first of a series of joint board meetings where we can share about the transformative impact that this symbolic partnership can create for students. As Dr. Powell alluded to, the research shows that when TK-12 school districts strategically partner and collaborate effectively with their local community colleges, the following happens for students. Number one, increased access to a college degree. Number two, dramatically decreased educational costs for students and their families. Number three, smoother transitions to the post-secondary environment. Number four, increased career preparedness and opportunities for students. And number five, more opportunity gaps are closed and thus lives are transformed. Let tonight be a symbol of our commitment to that potential transformation. I'm excited about the potential of being a statewide model for this specific work. I challenge Dr. Powell, myself, and the trustees from both organizations in the boardroom tonight to embrace this idea of becoming a statewide model for a partnership between TK-12 and a local community college. So with that, we are going to start to listen and learn together about the work. Our staff has prepared an in-depth, high-quality, comprehensive presentation. Both staff members from the Napa Valley College and the Napa Valley Unified School District are here tonight, and I know they've also worked tirelessly to make sure that tonight's evening is informative and just a solid beginning to what is going to be an ongoing dialogue about all of our potential and impact. So with that, I'm going to toss it over to Assistant Superintendent Pat Andrew Jennings, who oversees the Instructional Services Division here for the school district.
I thought the timer was going to come up for three minutes. That would be remarkable.
We like to keep our board meetings short.
Three-minute presentation. Well, good evening, Napa Valley College and Napa Valley Unified School District's Board trustees, Presidents Water and Iverson, and NVUSD Superintendent Dr. Masetti and Napa Valley College Dr. Powell. My name is Pat Andrew Jennings. I am the Assistant Superintendent of Instructional Services for Napa Valley Unified. I'd like to extend a warm welcome to our NVC trustees and President Powell. Thank you for joining us in this first-ever joint meeting between these two educational powerhouses in the Napa Valley. Tonight, you are in for a treat as we share the progress being made to strengthen our partnership between Napa Valley College and NVUSD in service to the future life goals of our students. Presenting alongside me tonight from NVUSD is Director Monica Reddy, the Director of Curriculum Instruction and English Learner Services. Director Reddy has definitely led this partnership work with the Napa Valley College staff. Lisa Faith, NVUSD's incredibly knowledgeable college and career coordinator, will also be presenting. She'll give you a little wave, a little, just wave. As well as Abi Dev, who's the proud principal of Napa, of New Technology High School and a newly identified California distinguished school. So Principal Dev is also here. And we are also happy to include in our presentation our student board representative, Mr. Bancole, who is not only our board representative alternate, but also a dual enrollment ambassador for Napa Valley College. I will now pass to Dr. Priscilla Mora, who will introduce the presenters from Napa Valley College.
Thank you so much. It's wonderful to be part of this historic meeting. Again, my name is Priscilla Mora. I'm the Assistant Superintendent Vice President of Academic Affairs at Napa Valley, and I'm joined by three of our amazing team. First, I'd like to introduce Dr. Doug Marriott.
And Doug? Yes. Hello. Who is the dean with Career Education and Workforce Development where dual enrollment is housed. And Christine Tapia, who is our manager of Dual Enrollment and Educational Partnerships, and she will be doing much of the speaking tonight as she leads that program. And then joined by one of our faculty members, Claudette Chateau. All right. Who is a professor and program coordinator for business and entrepreneurship and also has been teaching dual enrollment classes for a while. So she brings that faculty perspective of what it's like to do that in our high schools. So thank you so much for having us here tonight. Director Reddy, before we dive in, I just wanted to make sure, because I may have overlooked this, when we prepare for the presentation delivery, just to let the two boards know when we worked with staff, there are going to be natural points, pausing points in the middle of the presentation after topics are presented on for you to ask clarifying questions, but we will reserve deliberation, discussion, and comments for the very end of the presentation. So pause points along the way as we navigate the topics that are listed here on the board, and then discussion and questions at the end, deeper discussion and questions at the end. We want to let staff get through all the content. So with that, I'll toss back to Director Reddy. Thank you.
Good evening, Napa Valley College, Napa Valley Unified School District Board of Trustees, President Waters, President Iverson, and NVUSD Superintendent Dr. Masetti and Dr. Powell, and staff who join us tonight. Thank you for partnering with us and the larger Napa community. Tonight, we will provide an overview of three ways that we partner and the power partnership that is allowing our students to engage in college and career readiness. The first one is our overview of our dual enrollment programs, the history, the data around that, the progress that we've made in our future next steps. This will lead into sharing about how this partnership is helping position students for early, for career readiness through the career pathways. And then finally, hearing the opportunity for another historic change in our community, which is bringing in early college program to New Tech High School, the first in the county. We'll close tonight by sharing our future vision, and as shared, we will have opportunities for questions and discussion throughout. So we will start off tonight. I get to drive you through this presentation tonight, so you'll see me a couple of times. We get to start off tonight, at the core of our partnership is dual enrollment. It is foundational to what we do. And starting us off tonight to talk about how our goals and our vision really align, which is foundational to this partnership, is Assistant Superintendent Pat Andrew Jennings.
Thank you, Director Reddy. College and career readiness, college and career readiness has been a cornerstone in our strategic plan that was adopted by the NVUSD Board in 2018. This plan will be sunsetting this year. Goal number one focused on student learning, achievement, and access, which prioritize the need to prepare students for life post-secondary. A key partner in this work naturally is Napa Valley College, as many of our students continue their education there. Acknowledging that the alignment of our college and career readiness programming was essential to prepare students for life after high school graduation, the NVUSD Board elevated this focus by making it one of our annual board priorities this year. One of the success indicators of this board priority was increasing dual enrollment opportunities across all of our comprehensive high schools. Tonight, the presentation will provide a very clear picture of the efforts made to ensure that students have equitable access and successful completion of dual enrollment courses. As I mentioned earlier, NVUSD's strategic plan is sunsetting, and a new strategic vision has been carefully crafted with collaboration from multiple community partners, family members, staff, and students through an iterative process over the past eight months. Our new vision highlights the importance of preparing students to be future-ready. We are excited about the possibilities that lay ahead in our partnership with Napa Valley College as we work to ensure equitable outcomes in our partnership work with Napa Valley College. I will now toss to Napa Valley College's Manager of Dual Enrollment and Educational Partnerships, Christine Tapia.
Thank you, Pat. Good evening, everyone. Good evening, trustees from both the college and NVUSD. Good evening, partners and community members. So thank you for this opportunity to share all of the amazing work that this partnership has brought about and will bring about for dual enrollment. Let me start off by talking a little bit about Vision 2030. So those of us who belong to the California Community College system are guided by a vision from my new chancellor, Dr. Sonia Christian. And it is a roadmap for all of the community colleges in California that ties in the governor's roadmap. And as you can see from this slide, key components of this roadmap are very heavily focused on equity, equity in access, equity in support, equity in success. And there are very ambitious goals within this vision, very ambitious but attainable goals if we partner strategically, to improve graduation, transfer, and certificate completion rates, to ensure that our students are receiving the appropriate level of education and support so that they can achieve their educational and career goals in a timely manner, and also addressing disparities in student outcomes that are based on race, ethnicity, socioeconomic status, and other factors to ensure that all students have equitable access to higher education and support systems. And a third key component is aligning college programs with the needs of California's workforce to provide students with the skills and knowledge that they need to succeed in the job market. And dual enrollment is a vital component of the Vision 2030 from the chancellor's office. Okay, so housed within the Vision 2030 initiative is another initiative called the Ninth Grade Strategy. And this strategy, as you can see, requires that every incoming ninth grader enroll in a college course and develop a college education plan to include at least 12 college credits. So a typical example would be for a ninth grader to take a counseling college success course or a student development course for their first half of their ninth grade. And there are other strategies on how to expand this from 10th, 11th, and 12th, such as 12 units within three years, 12 units within two, or 12 within one, which is very rigorous but very attainable if we have the right support systems and the structures for it. Okay, so stepping back a little bit, providing some definitions, some minor definitions about dual enrollment. So what is dual enrollment? Aside from being a key component of Vision 2030, dual enrollment is a really unique opportunity that provides students the access to take community college courses while they're still in high school. So you'll see from this slide the nuances of dual enrollment courses, such as courses that are taught by college professors at the high school campus, or perhaps high school instructors who meet college minimum requirements to teach. These courses can count towards both a college certificate, college general education requirements, a degree, and also high school graduation requirements. It is a method of early college credit attainment similar to AP courses or IB courses or high school articulation courses, right? And what's great about it is that a lot of the times, the students are really exempt from paying enrollment fees because of legislation that supports dual enrollment. And you'll see on this slide, Kimberly Robinson, who is a dual enrollment alum from American Canyon High School, who graduated last year like six units shy of Canyon High School, who graduated last year like six units shy of an associate's degree when she graduated with a high school diploma. She's currently working for Napa Valley College as a student affairs specialist. Okay, so there are several types of early college credit attainment, right? And dual enrollment is just one, one aspect of that. Those involved that you see on your slides are currently among the ones that our partnership offers for NVUSD students. So we'll go, we'll go into detail a little bit about them. So the first type of dual enrollment within our partnership is what we call college and career access pathways, or CCAP agreements. So CCAP classes are college courses that are taught during the bell schedule within a high school campus, typically by a high school teacher who is qualified to teach college-level courses. This is the most popular form of dual enrollment with, among NVUSD students. And it makes perfect sense because we bring the college coursework to the high school. They're familiar with the teacher who teaches, who is in front of them in the classroom. They have access to supports not only from the high school campus, but also from the college, and they are completely exempt from paying any fees related to the course or textbooks or materials. There are also a handful of non-CCAP, or what we call individual dual enrollment, where a student self-selects courses to take. And a lot of these times, you know, the students may be exempt from these enrollment fees, but they might have to pay for books, materials, et cetera. And the third kind, which we are very excited to partner with NVUSD and New Tech High School with, is an early college program, which we'll be launching this fall, which, you know, to Trustee Waters comment earlier, we are all about making history in Napa County because this will be the first early college program of its kind in this county. I'm going to pass it on to Director Reddy to speak about the benefits of dual enrollment.
Okay, the benefits centering on our students and excited to hear from one tonight. It's amazing what students can do when you empower them and provide the opportunity and equity to access and what growth they can show. And this is true of dual enrollment. You'll see from 2022 data that students who are dual enrolled in courses are 12% more likely to graduate from high school. They are 7% more likely to earn a bachelor's degree. And everything that a parent likes to hear, their savings of approximately $3,100 per year in tuition and books. Beyond that, though, the savings, it's also the time that they spend in rigorous coursework, learning how to be a college student, having the opportunity to gain certificates. Maybe that bachelor's degree is not their next step, but they want that opportunity for a high-paying career, a high-paying job in the area, and having that option for a certificate with college courses through our local community college. And the access to even more supports beyond NVUSD, they have access to incredible supports at Napa Valley College and resources in order to succeed on their campus, and then also brought to us by shared staff who are on our campuses, on our sites, and working with our students. I couldn't say it better than a student herself who's experienced this, so I will hand it over to our alternate board rep and NVUSD Dual Enrollment Ambassador, Mr. Ban Kole.
Thank you all so much, and thank you, Ms. Reddy, for giving me the opportunity to speak here tonight. I would like to start with my personal story of dual enrollment. I transferred into the school district from an underfunded middle school in Vallejo. We had, we did not have a math teacher for two years, and in eighth grade, I did not have an English teacher. So you can imagine what coming in as a freshman felt like. It was very difficult. Coupled with distant learning and unfortunate family circumstances, I fell behind my freshman year. And when we went back in-person sophomore year, I felt as if I was drowning. I could not catch up, and I was very behind. Dual enrollment saved me, and I am not over-exaggerating. The first time that I felt a spark for learning was when I was going through the NVC catalog for, you know, classes, I felt like a kid in a candy store. The love for learning suddenly, you know, woke back up. And for once in a long time, I wanted to be in high school. So I signed up for classes. I took them. I was able to get my grades back up. I was finally in a place where I felt confident enough to ask for help. I was empowered by the classes I was able to take. And because of dual enrollment, I was able to make up the grades in the classes that I had failed freshman year. And again, when I say dual enrollment saved me, that's exactly what I mean. I was able to get back on track to graduate because of dual enrollment. And that is not just true for me, but for lots of students. I know this because I get the opportunity to talk to them every single day as a dual enrollment ambassador. In my position, I get to assist students and help them find their spark and their love for learning, the same way I did. Students that feel as if they're not going to graduate, or they're not going to be able to go into college, come into the meetings, you know, that I have with them as a dual enrollment ambassador, feeling pretty much hopeless, and they leave filled with hope. They leave knowing that they can do it, and it's truly empowering. And to be able to do this as a student, I think adds another layer to it because students tend to feel intimidated to talk to adults about, you know, their struggles in school. But to be able to talk to a fellow student about it, and a student that has gone through the process, and I think, for them, I think is very empowering and makes it seem realistic, the fact that they can rise up from whatever it is that their situation is. And I think dual enrollment is also for students who are already taking a bunch of AP classes, but feel capable and empowered to take that next step in their education and take college classes and keep pushing themselves. So I feel as if, for us at our campus, to be a student in dual enrollment is something that's cool. It's celebrated. And if my friend's doing dual enrollment, I want to do dual enrollment too. And I think to have that kind of school culture surrounded around, you know, pushing yourself academically is truly amazing. And you can see the sense of pride that students feel when they're taking these courses. And I know well that they feel like me when I was scrolling through that catalog, like a kid in a candy store. And you hear students often talking about wanting certain classes in school, journalism and things like that, to be offered. They can take that at the college, and it helps them, you know, become excited to take that next step in their career. And students that often don't see themselves pursuing higher education can finally envision themselves in those spaces. And unfortunately, those tend to be students of, you know, color and in marginalized groups. And when they take that one CTE class, they realize that college is doable for them. And again, to be a part of that process is really inspiring for me as a student. So yeah, for me, to be able to participate in dual enrollment was an incredible privilege, and I'm more than honored to be able to share that with the students at our school and share that with you all today. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Okay, we'll pause here and take questions, if there are any.
Trustee Olson.
I have a question for those who struggle academically. Is there, is there, and if so, what supports are in place for those with accommodations plans, those who need a little extra support, even getting through high school?
I can answer that question. So starting last year, when we've really expanded dual enrollment offerings across the high schools in NVUSD, we've also intentionally made sure that we are collaborating on the support systems around these classes because offering the classes won't, won't be as effective if the students are really needing and missing that support. So as a, as a good example, with New Tech High School, and Principal Dev is here, and we'll perhaps touch on this later on in this presentation, students who have IEPs or are in need of accommodations work with our DSPS office at the college for intake services. They have a counselor who works with them, who understands the bridge between your high school IEPs and college accommodations, and can advise those students appropriately. So same goes for any tutoring needs of our, of our dual enrolled students. If a student takes English classes or math classes, they have access to the math and English success centers at the college. In fact, in American Canyon, we're piloting, bringing in writing success workshops for some of those who are currently taking English. Summer Hartz class is a first of, in that pilot, where about 13, no, 20 students who are taking English in our class also work with a, one of our college English faculty to be guided through and tutored for their writing assignments. They are visiting campus in May, mid-May, to do some hands-on work in our writing success center, and also be given the opportunity to work on some requirements that they'll have when they transfer onto college, like an application or financial aid.
Great, thank you.
Trustee Gracia.
Yeah, so I was noticing the four and 12 pathway. I don't see how that really is possible for our comprehensive high school students as soon as the health and ethnic studies class comes into being as a requirement, particularly if the student is not willing to take early or late flight, or has an EBIT class, or wants to participate in a VAPA program. So I'm not sure that that's a realistic option. So can you explain how that could possibly work?
Yeah, so our CCAP courses are often courses that align to A to G requirements as well. And so they also sometimes align to our CTE courses. And so it may be a course that's articulated, or is a CCAP course that a student would take in CTE that also counts for visual art. And so you see that integration, that overlap of requirements often. And where we started, and you'll see in a minute, is that our math courses, many of our math courses at the upper division level are also CCAP courses. So in order, as we look at graduation requirements, I think it's something that we need to continue to be mindful and thoughtful of as we go through this process, and seeing where the opportunities for integration and alignment with our requirements and the requirements that they have at the college. So being purposeful about that, but it is something that we need to be mindful of continually as we add CCAP courses.
Yeah, it just didn't seem like there was a way to fit it into the freshman course curriculum, so to speak.
Oh, I see what you're saying, four and three.
Yeah.
Yes, so we, we have not yet figured out how to align in ninth grade. That is an area of growth for us. Students can take courses, we're exploring a couple of courses, but those aren't finalized yet. Students can take courses at the college, but to strategically do it for every ninth grader, that's still an area of growth and opportunity.
I just had a quick question on the CCAP versus non-CCAP. The CCAP numbers, we have more students doing and less on the non-CCAP?
That's correct.
Why?
Why isn't it?
Why is that?
You'll see in, in future slides, but the, the short answer really is that it makes, it almost eliminates the barriers, thinking about transportation, online class support, right? Those are factors that are not typical of CCAP classes because they're housed within the high school campus. The high school teachers who teach these classes teach the same curriculum as our college instructors for the similar classes. The CCAP classes also because of the, the nature that they're, you don't really pay anything for them, they tend to be more popular. And also, the supports around it is very intentional. We have an academic affairs specialist who works one-on-one with every CCAP student to help them complete the application, financial aid, all the permits, and onboard them. So it's essentially kind of like a service that we provide for that type of dual enrollment versus the non-CCAPs, which are self-navigated.
So I guess I have a follow-up question with the non-CCAP courses. My experience with my own kids doing dual enrollment is that they're, a lot of them are asynchronous. So that might address that, it seems like that would be the, a route to help meet that goal because of the master's schedule and the timing difficulties, as Trustee Gracia brought up, especially once our ninth grade requirement shift next year. So I guess my question is, is that a parallel track that you'll continue to develop to have more asynchronous opportunities? Or is the, the thrust really here to get more of the availability and access on the campus during, during the school day?
I can't speak for the entire college schedule, but I do know that our goal is to always provide that ultimate flexibility for students. So we've had students who take in-person, fully in-person classes. Hybrid classes seem to be the most popular types in terms of students enrolling in hybrid dual enrollment classes. And then there are students who choose that online asynchronous self-paced classes. It really is, you know, like, I think that's the value of working with both a high school and college counselor when a student is doing their educational plan, is that to see the, you know, what is the ultimate flexibility that your plan can offer for you, and then how to get there and how to enroll there.
One of the areas that we've expanded and grown and have looked at as an opportunity is when you, providing the opportunity for students in a course that is asynchronous, but in partnering with the college, having one of our staff there, they're not necessarily the teacher, they're the teacher of record, but they're not the teacher creating the content, so students can then access it. So for example, some of our students are enrolled in English 120 at New Tech High School, and it's asynchronous, but there's a teacher of record for us. And so looking at how we grow opportunities by being creative in our partnerships and use of our staff.
Okay, well, thank you.
All right, I'm back. Okay. Am I doing something wrong? It's not working. Oh, there you go. All right. So hopefully by now you've heard enough information that you're kind of bought in, you're, you believe that dual enrollment is it. But some of you are probably asking, like, how did we get here, right? So NVC and NVUSD have fortunately have had a longstanding partnership. In fact, when the college was founded, we were founded on these very grounds, until we bought a parcel of land in the south side of, of Napa, and we moved to the campus that you now know we are. And this partnership, that strong foundation is, it really served, it's a, it's a strong foundation for more formalized dual enrollment opportunities, like CCAP agreements and early college. So soon after AB 288 was enacted by Governor Jerry Brown in 2016, both districts decided to partner and formalize the first CCAP agreement between NVC and NVUSD. We began that with two math classes at Napa High School, I think it was Calculus 1 and 2. And those are classes that we still offer to this day. Many of your students have gone through Mr. Gregory's classes and still do. And then future, subsequent years, expanded that agreement to include Vintage High School, where we've been teaching culinary arts classes and statistics, and then American Canyon High School, where we've had a lot of, a lot of offerings from health occupations to business and entrepreneurship to culinary arts and hospitality management. And we're always looking for more opportunities in American Canyon as well. And then just last year, the CCAP renewal expands to New Tech High School, who really jumped both feet first into dual enrollment, went from zero offerings to, I think, four CCAP classes and a number of non-CCAP classes, and now will be launching an early college program this fall. So really fast and furious, but very strategic and very collaborative. So dual enrollment partnerships continue to grow locally here in Napa and evolve across California, where there is an increasing number of high school students who participate in college courses each year. So just to show kind of how we measure, again, state and national levels, this is data from the Community College Research Center from '22, where they estimate that one out of five US high school students take college classes. It's a big, that's a big number and continues to grow. In the state of California, one out of 10 high school students take college classes. And here at NVUSD, two out of 10 NVUSD high school students take college classes. So we are doing really well. We are exceeding state levels, and we're commensurate with national levels. So bear with me, the next few slides are going to have a lot of numbers, a lot of tables, a lot of data. So I am pretty sure you will have questions about it after. Just to show you the participation data, so we're actually really excited to be able to have access to this tool. So up until now, there has not been one system that looked at both California Department of Education reported data from our K-12s and the California Community College data, right, until now. We were very fortunate to be privy to this tool as we hosted a dual enrollment implementation workshop with the chancellor's office and workshop with the chancellor's office in January at Napa Valley College, and they gave us a sneak peek to be able to use this tool and see our dual enrollment participation rates. So you will see from this, this is 2022, '23 data, which is the first year that they are using this data tool for. You will see that approximately a fifth of NBUSD high school students participated in dual enrollment that year. So that was the year that we were kind of coming out of COVID, and more students are more engaged and interested in looking at opportunities, they're, they're excited to be out of their Zoom boxes, and so there has been that spike, that increase of dual enrollment for NBUSD students. So relative to Napa Valley College's enrollment that year, that number is approximately 27% of our total headcount. And out of the 27% of all dual enrolled students that NVC tracks, 19% of that is NBUSD students. This is dual enrollment count by age at grade. So what you see here is that the total, out of the total number of participants, the highest participants are always in the 12th grade. And this is very typical of state and national data, because 12th graders are the ones who are preparing for college applications, completing their transfer, they want that extra boost of college readiness, and also higher years in high school tend to have more flexibility in their schedule. They have a lot of free period, they might have been done with their, a lot of their grad requirements and GEs. So they really look at dual enrollment to fulfill, to fill that schedule. And so this is just percentage rate, so out of all the 12th graders in NBUSD, about 35.7% participated in dual enrollment in '22, '23. So another data point that this tool looks at relative to information reported to the California Department of Ed and the chancellor's office is dual enrollment participation by So you'll see here that out of all of our participants from NBUSD in '22, '23, almost 40% identified as Hispanic Latino. And that makes sense with both of the institutions as Hispanic-serving institutions. And also, consistent with system-wide trends and even national trends, the students who identify as Black, African-American, Native American, Indigenous, Filipino, and Pacific Islander tend to fall at the bottom of the participation list. And so this is important as we focus on future expansion and stabilization of dual enrollment, that we really should highly consider shared strategies to make sure that we are engaging and calling in students from these particular population groups, so we address these inequities for them. I'm going to go back a slide, so this is the percentage, and so what it means is that, let's take Hispanic or Latino for example, we have a gap of 18.1%. So in terms of actual headcount, that means that we need to reach 208 more students who identify as Hispanic Latino for the next year to bridge that gap.
So MBUSD and NBC really work in partnership to develop our C cap courses, and it's a year-long process that we work together. I'm incredibly grateful for the partnership and elevation of Christine's role at the college, it wouldn't be possible without her. And so this looks like multiple different, no, I can't get the clicker to work. Okay, so it looks like, at first, taking time to plan and look at data. And so that's looking at data, student data, also looking at student survey interest, analyzing that. Christine works very closely with our high schools and meets with our high school staff, and then that results in discussions between the district and Napa Valley College leadership around what course offerings are possible, what staffing do we have available based off of data and student interests. Once we have that decided, then we can look at student recruitment, and so putting that on the course registration card. Here we go. Putting that on the course registration card, making sure that families are aware of that. We've had the opportunity to have Napa Valley College present to our families around opportunities that students have, both through their courses on campus for C cap and also at the college as well. And then looking at how we build those into our schedule. At that time of year, oftentimes you see the new, the renewal of our C cap, and that is when you see those courses being added, they go before our boards. And then there's constant progress monitoring throughout the year, how it's going, how we're meeting the needs of our students, how our courses are going and making changes as there's changes in enrollment. So with that, it's also a consideration of staffing needs, and so there are, there are agreements and minimum qualifications that staff needs to meet. So ideally, we have our, our own staff on campus opening up the doors of opportunity for our students in our C cap courses, that's not always a possibility. And so really working with our staff to see if they meet minimum qualifications, and then also seeing if there are ways and opportunities that we can expand that and offer our staff opportunities, you'll see is an area later on as we look to the future. As Christine shared, our C cap courses have grown over the, over the life of our C cap agreements, and it's really exciting to see that expansion on our, on our classes, from the courses that were offered at Napa High School in 2019, 2020, to the courses that are offered today in '23, '25. USC expansion at each of the high schools and expansion in multiple different course areas. So some of the courses that are offered, you can see that consistently math has been a priority since we began this journey, and then expanding those courses to CTE, expanding those courses to performing arts, world languages. And also looking at some of the opportunities in business and entrepreneurship, which you'll hear tonight from one of the professors at the college. And so it's been a great opportunity to partner and see what are the interests of our students, as was shared earlier around opportunities that we may not have, and what staffing can we provide, and then how we come about to these classes and see that expansion. So that's currently where we're at in '23, '25, with the opportunity to grow in '24, '25.
All right, so perhaps, if not more important than looking at how our enrollment numbers are growing, is looking at how our students are performing in these classes. So I'll take the, the last slide, the one on your right, as an example, where the average dual enrollment success rate for our high school students who participate in college courses is around 90.2%, right? And if they enroll in those C cap courses where they have very intentional supports, it's brought onto the high school campus, they're familiar, they have dual enrollment ambassadors who can help support them during the school day, that success rate goes up a significant amount. We're almost at 99% success rates for C cap classes. And so these are amazing numbers, and in a lot of cases, compared to students who are in the 18 to 25 age range, which are your typical college-age students, in the same courses and disciplines, our dual enrolled students tend to perform about nine to 12% points higher than 18 to 25-year-olds. So our students are doing tremendously well, which is really why this is a challenge for us to think about how we expand this, how we expand these opportunities, especially to those students who are losing out on this, or who may not be aware of these opportunities. I think we have time for questions.
Trustee Chu.
Thank you. I have a question about what gets counted under dual enrollment participation. Does that include summer also?
So our reporting looks at regular semesters, fall and spring. So for, for college reporting, we typically look at, you know, like, for example, that the data you saw was from Fall '22 and Spring '23. There are a handful of summer dual enrollment opportunities, but they're typically, because our high school students are off session, essentially, we don't count those.
And I know that this is data for just Napa Valley College. I know that there are some students from American Canyon High School that enroll in Solano College, because that's just as easy to get to for us. So I, I'm wondering if some of this might be under-reporting because they are somewhere else, not necessarily here. I would love to see the ability for us to do that, I don't know if it's possible.
There are systems in place that look at a student in whatever school that they enroll in, but it's not, it's not, you know, very, it's not unusual for a student to do that. You know, every college has a certain, like, list of offerings, and of course, because dual enrollment students tend to kind of fall at the bottom of their priority registration schedule, they will seek out opportunities elsewhere. But those community colleges have mechanisms to make sure that if, you know, if they are intending to complete a degree at Napa Valley College, we can look at their Solano transcripts and transfer those credits in, and then they end up with an NBC transcript, an NBC diploma, certificate, whatnot. But that's, that is a really good point, that I know the CDE and the chancellor's office are currently working on making sure that they have a fuller picture of a student's dual enrollment journey.
Great, thank you.
Trustee Hart.
Hi, I have a question for Director Ready. So when kids are taking AP classes or honors classes, those are going to be weighted in their grade point average and considered in a different realm. Since these are college-level courses, are these weighted similarly, or are they going to be unweighted?
Yes, they're weighted in our system similarly, similarly to an AP course, and so our district registrar has a, has a way to know which courses are our C cap courses, and then those are weighted as such.
And is only C cap rated that way? So if I were to, if I was a student and I was a senior in any of the high schools, and I went to the college and took a college course on my own, or I guess through this program now that this is going to be launching, would that similarly, similarly be weighted in that manner?
I have to look into when we transfer it over, not all students transfer their credits over, so that's a good question, I'll have to follow up.
Okay, thank you.
Trustee Gracia.
Yeah, so I was noticing that ninth-grade students, there's only 63 of them that enroll, and outside perhaps of New Tech in the future, it seems like that number will only go down because of our limitations on the number of periods available and the new requirements for Health and Ethnic Studies. Do you share that anticipation?
Currently, I'd have to look at where those 63 students are. I would imagine that those students are enrolling in courses outside, or maybe in a CTE course, and so I, I don't anticipate that those would fall. I would hope that we could look for ways to integrate and see how they could rise. We're exploring some courses, but those aren't finalized yet.
Trustee Gonzalez-Morris.
My question is on the dual enrollment participation data, where it shows the gaps. As you know, we're facing collectively the decline in enrollment, so I'm wondering how that factors in, in the numbers. I mean, the point of the graph is to show where the gaps are and how we have our strategies in our partnerships so that there's equity in those efforts, but how does that play in? And then my other question is, as we're working, and that might be for Director Ready, in regards to the milestones, we're pretty big over here with social-emotional learning, how does that partner with the college and the college efforts for also social-emotional learning, or however you call that in your institution? So just, how does that all come together?
So I can address the first question regarding gaps. It certainly has been impacted by declining enrollment, but unique to dual enrollment has been, you know, for the past two, I would say the past couple of years, despite declining enrollment at the state and national level, dual enrollment has been, dual enrollment programs have subtly seen an increase in participation, and I think more awareness of students and their families around the benefits of it has been instrumental in that increase. But that is a very good point of how we collaborate on addressing those gaps, and there are a lot of strategies, but I think for us, for the current state of the partnership, we have really worked very intentionally on collaborating on, you know, early outreach and recruitment for students, making sure that our staff work together to provide those student supports, and also very targeted and very focused engagement opportunities, especially for those students. We like to promote, you know, like, what we, what we have on campus beyond courses, which is our, you know, a big portion of that is just the college experience, our college support systems, the special programs such as learning communities, which are really popular at the college, you know, our Puente program, Umoja, now we have Casay Sain, which is Philippine X, learning community, and also Pride Learning Community tied to our LGBT studies programs. So we really try to, like, reach students in many ways where they feel like they can connect with the college, and then we go in to talk about the opportunities around dual enrollment or coming to college, to really foster that college-going culture, especially for students who, you know, this is not a conversation they typically have at the dinner table.
With regard to social-emotional learning, I think we have similar opportunities both in our high schools and in our, and in our colleges, and so students have doubled the amount of access. So from the wellness centers at the high schools, to the immense amount of services that students then open up doors when they become a dual-enrolled student, they have access to those at the college. And I think in another area that we're looking at and that was shared is, is coming up in the early college, looking at a counseling course that really looks at how do we support students in that transition to rigorous courses? And so seeing how that goes at New Tech High School, and seeing if that's potentially something that we could explore for our students early on so that they have success. And they have, I think, one thing that really stood out to me around what Mr. said is just the confidence that I think comes from some of those experiences, and then the social-emotional support that goes along with that.
You all are fine? Okay.
Okay, we get to go to the next section. The next powerful partnership is around providing students with transfer opportunities and career pathways, and I know that that's been an area that both the college and Napa Valley Unified School District have really been focusing on career readiness and ensuring that students have access to those. So I will turn it over to Dr. Moore.
So college general education will be an important part of how we build dual enrollment between our two districts. As you can see, there's some really important information on this slide, that the success that students have in dual enrollment classes really is connected also to their success in college. And we see that on the left side, the number of bachelor's degree holders in the state and strengthening economic security of our workers is really a pivotal goal for us. The bolded text, students who transfer to UCs and CSU's are more likely to start as dual enrollment students, is that first success that students have that really shore them up for their transfer to another institution of higher ed. So this is one of the goals, but we also, of course, have career readiness goals for those who are not planning to go on to higher ed, or their pathway to career is through higher ed. So for that, I will pass it on.
Well, good evening. My name is Lisa Faith, and I have the awesome opportunity to be the coordinator for college and career readiness here at Napa Valley Unified School District, so I get to oversee all things college and career readiness, so gets me out of bed every morning. So one of the, the places where we have another awesome opportunity to collaborate is around career pathways and our intentional alignment of career pathways. So just wanted to take a moment to come up with some common definitions, because we hear this term a lot, you know, but are we using it the same way? So what are career pathways? So, so career pathways or career education is really a K-16 trajectory. It is a coherent series of courses that support students in being prepared for both career and moving on into higher education. And so it's known by many names, and so for our younger scholars on our elementary and middle school campuses, we might talk about career exploration or exploratory arts for our middle schoolers. And then on our high school campuses, you have probably heard career pathways or career education discussed as career technical ed or CTE, right? So again, we're talking about those coherently designed sequences of classes that lead our students into not only career readiness, but also college readiness. And then on our post-secondary campuses, community colleges, four-year colleges, and in adult ed, they also may be known as career or guided pathways. So, you know, when I say pathway, you mean pathway, what we're talking about is career education, and it really is a K-16 trajectory. What we're talking about is career education, and it really is a K-16 trajectory, which is why this partnership is, is essential because there's opportunities for us to then align those trajectories for our students. So on whatever level of education, career pathways are real world. They are aligned with work-based learning opportunities and tend to be very focused on hands-on learning opportunities in addition to rigorous academic preparedness. It is not one or the other, but it is how you access that rigorous academic preparedness. Essential that career pathways are focused on careers in local, high-wage, high-growth industries. We want to make sure that we're preparing our students for careers that have projected job openings right here and that offer careers that have livable wage. And then within career pathways, within career education, there is often industry certificates that students can earn that are valuable directly into the workforce, associate's degrees as they move on into the community college space, transfer degrees. And of course, as we've been talking about all evening, oftentimes, career pathways offer dual enrollment in the high school space. So many of our CTE classes offer dual enrollment. They are C cap classes as well. So again, just making sure that we're all, when we say pathways, now we know what we're talking about. And so then, one of the most important opportunities that we have is we are aligning our career pathways is to make sure that our career pathways are in alignment with high-priority industry sectors. So what are high-priority industry sectors? So workforce boards, city councils, folks that are very, very interested in monitoring workforce needs, workforce pipelines, monitor this type of information. And so labor market information or labor market data becomes one of the most valuable pieces of research in this work. And so when we look at the local labor market information here in Napa County, these are the top five high-priority industry sectors. In other words, these large umbrella industry sectors are projected to have lots of job openings for our students in the future and offer high-wage jobs. Now, these are quite broad. And so within each one of these sectors are multiple sub-industries and pathways for students to explore. So I think it's really important that as we talk about this and as we explore opportunities, that we are not talking about asking a 14-year-old to commit to, this is what I want to be forever and ever, right? We're not asking 14-year-olds to choose their career. It really is about exposing them to the opportunity knowledge of these are the careers that are available to you in your backyard right here. Let's experience them, let's expose ourselves to them. And many of the skills that students get access to in these career pathways have transferable skills. And so even if in high school, let's say they take manufacturing and they end up studying something else in the community space and end up doing something else professionally, those skills that they learned in that high school CTE class are transferable. They are life skills, they are college and career readiness skills. So some, some fun data here, probably not a big surprise about our community here, but under the agricultural and natural resources sector, and then again, looking at hospitality, tourism, recreation, probably not a surprise that those came up here, but beverage manufacturing falls under hospitality, tourism, recreation. And, and here in Napa, according to the Centers of Excellence and a 2024 report around the beverage, there is 75.2 times a larger share of the jobs in beverage manufacturing here in Napa than in the rest of the nation. So 75.2 times more, not a big surprise. Beverage manufacturing provides more employment than the next two largest industries combined. But important that we, we think about this broadly and we think about it in terms of solving the problems of our industry partners rather than same old, same old, what careers, you know, what do I want to be when I grow up? Rather, it's what problems do I want to solve in the future? And how are these different pathways going to help me solve them? So just again, in, in beverage manufacturing, there's the obvious, you know, beverage manufacturing, but that also touches on all of these pri, high-priority industry sectors, right? Tucks on ag tech, ag manufacturing, viticulture, culinary arts, hotel management, sales representatives, general operation managers, production supervisors. And so again, even just within one industry sector, you're touching on multiple pathways with transferable skills and high-priority, high-wage jobs right here in our backyard. So this is, this is what, what we're doing in the background is making sure that the, that the career pathways, now we all know what that means, are aligned with these local high-priority industry sectors. And they are, and that's exciting for our students. And, you know, my hope is that if we get our students to stay right here, then we're going to start seeing a reversal of that declining enrollment problem, right? Get them to stay right here. Thank you so much. Oh, and I have the honor to pass it on to Claudette Chateau, who's going to talk about the faculty experience.
Hello, my name is Claudette Chateau, and I am business entrepreneurship faculty, full-time faculty and program coordinator. Thank you for having me here today. I get to share the really fun stories. I get to share the success stories, and I might get emotional because it's just such impact work that we're doing. I first would like to introduce you to Mackenzie Payne. Mackenzie is the class of 2020, go Grizzlies! Grizzlies in the house, Grizzlies. You may know Mackenzie, a lot of you here in the community probably know her because she is a shining star. She's very active in the community. Trustee Olson, I know you have a great relationship with her through your work with Teens Connect. So Mackenzie, I met Mackenzie fall of 2019. Now, although she is a student of Napa High School, she actually was taking her dual enrollment class, her interdepartmental business class at New Tech. So I taught the class at New Tech, it was after school, she would come. And again, I told you, when I first met her, I knew that this student was going to go places. So fast forward, she graduates, and 2020, later in 2020, she calls me and she says, Ms. Claudette, I want to start a business, and I'm wondering if you can mentor me? Well, of course I will. So we meet once a month at Barn House. And sure enough, because she is a shining star, she starts her business, and of course, she was featured in the Napa Valley Register. The name of our company is A Fresh Start, and she was a home organization. She would come in, help you purge, do home organization. Great news story on Mackenzie. So let me tell you a little bit about my entrepreneurship students. First, they want to work for themselves. They want to have a remote schedule, they want to create their own hours. And they think that they're going to create a one-successful TikTok that's going to be a viral video and that all the business is going to come to them, and they're just going to have passive income and live the rest of their life as a millionaire. Okay? They all think this. I'm here to support them in that journey, but I'm also here to mentor them through that journey. Now, Mackenzie, she was a student now at Napa Valley College. She's a graduate from Napa High, she's at Napa Valley College, and she's an entrepreneurship student. So she's on a pathway of entrepreneurship. It's very common for my entrepreneurship students to take the college classes and to have a business, a side hustle, if you will, right? So year goes on, of course, she's doing great. She's a shining star, she's doing great. And then her first bad review happens. And then the first person to be a difficult customer happens, right? And then she gets that customer that doesn't want to pay their bill. And so she says, Claudette, I got a job at Visit Napa Valley, and I'm going to quit my jo, I'm going to quit the business and I'm going to, you know, go work for Visit Napa Valley. Fantastic, absolutely, Mackenzie, I think that's a great idea. She started off as an associate, and now she's promoted to Senior Associate of Partnership Marketing. Of course she is, she's one of our shining stars, right? Additionally, I'm so proud of this girl, I'm so proud of her because throughout her mentorship, she said, I really want to start youth organization where we network, not like a drinking party where we come together and we actually network. All I had to do was introduce her to Whitney at the Youngville Chamber of Commerce, and they have taken it to a whole nother level. It's called Young Professionals Napa Valley, and they have over 300 members, including Mackenzie and a lot of our alumni, right? Great story. But let's talk about Mackenzie's journey, okay? She started off as a dual-enrolled high school student. She graduated, she's taking entrepreneurship classes. So entrepreneurship classes are an associate's degree, it's a two-year degree. After two years, they're off and they're starting their own business. And we have some really great ones here in town. But then she realized, when she got over to Visit Napa Valley, that eventually she was going to need a bachelor's degree if she wanted to continue climbing the ladder, right? So now she goes from high school student to entrepreneurship student, now to a business administration transfer student, which is a different degree pathway, and she's talking to Sonoma State. They have an extension program where she's going to be working full-time and going to Sonoma State. So when we talk about pathways, we don't call these guided straight lines. We call them pathways because they start here, they go like this, and then like this, and then like this, right? But with a guided pathway, they have a clear alignment of where they're starting, where they're at, and where they can go. That's a success of a guided pathway. I'd also like to highlight some really fun things that we did last year in partnership with Napa Valley Unified School District. This was our 11th Annual Business Plan Competition. Who you see in front of me is Kristin Aguado. She was a senior at American Canyon High School. Now, I'll tell you, at American Canyon High School, they have 139 students enrolled in business and entrepreneurship under C cap. I'm going to give a shout out to Professor Ishu, go Miss Ishu. She is amazing at American Canyon High School. She's taken our college curriculum and she's teaching it during school hours under C cap. So last year, during this competition, 139 students were enrolled. 27 business plans were submitted to this business plan competition. Five teams from American Canyon High School competed, and Kristin was the winner. This was in partnership, like I said, with NVUSD, but also with Travis Credit Union. They gave us $10,000 over the last two years to award seed monies to our entrepreneurs. It's also in partnership with Local Chambers of Commerce, our Small Business Development Center. And also who you see in that blue sweater is Victoria Canadae. She is the graduate from class of 2022, American Canyon High School, and she was the first-place winner in 2022. Fun success story. Moving on, another great success story. So we hosted a children's business fair last fall in partnership with Napa Valley Unified School District and the Boys and Girls Club. So I'm going to side story for a second. We had 50 entrepreneurs, so kids, 50 kids ages five to 17, who came on this day at the Boys and Girls Club gym, and they had their merchandise and the things that they were selling. And they were aged five to 17. Now, if you can imagine, the eight-year-olds, their parents helped them with the merchandising, right? Let's just be honest, the parents put together the whole display, right? Including my own son, I'm not going to lie, I helped my son with his display. And then you have our high school students, who clearly their parents didn't help them with their display. What you see there is a cleaning solution and tire solution, that was their display. Their business was mobile detailing, and, and, you know, they couldn't have brought a mobile car, a car into the Boys and Girls Club, so they did the best they can. But I really want to highlight these two gentlemen. The one you see on the left, his name is Fabian. I met Fabian a year and a half ago, again, New Tech High School, teaching the classes at New Tech. He was a student in our entrepreneurship class, wrote a business plan for his mobile car wash. Last semester, he took my marketing class. Now, you asked the question about asynchronous and synchronous. That particular class worked really well for high school students because it was a hybrid class, but we met on Zoom. So we also do a lot of classes where we're meeting on Zoom. Works really well for our dual-enrolled students. And this semester, he's actually enrolled in our business, my business communication class. He's an entrepreneurship student, and he's, he's doing great with his mobile car wash. Next to him is Javier. Javier is also a New Tech High School student. And Javier traveled with me to Europe for our Study Abroad Program 2022 and 2023. Dual enrolled, I mean, they had to pay to go to Europe, but they're getting their college credits for free. So now, speaking of Napa Valley, speaking of Study Abroad, I have one final student that I'd like to highlight for you guys. So Business in Barcelona, summer of 2022, took students to Barcelona. And to advertise this, I advertised it through email marketing, I did info sessions, and I was really clear on all of our marketing material that airline wasn't included. Okay. So a student, I'm going to name him Bob. Bob signs up for Business in Barcelona. I get that ping, great, Bob signed up for Business in Barcelona. Couple weeks later, I reach out to Bob and I say, Bob, I noticed you're not on our group airline, our group air flight. Can you please give me the details of your flight? And he writes back, what do you mean? Flight's included? No, I didn't want to just copy and paste, but copy and paste and send it back to him, flight's not included. So he writes back and he's like, my dad wants to talk to you. Fair, all right, let's talk to dad. So I meet with dad. Now, language is a barrier, but I could tell that the dad wasn't happy. In fact, the dad thought that I was trying to pull one over and bait and switch on his kid, right? And so I asked Bob, Bob, how did you find out about this trip? Because I was so clear, I made it very clear the airline wasn't included. And he said, I checked my phone, I scanned a QR code, and I signed up. Okay. So then he says, Ms. Claudette, where's Barcelona? I said, well, it's in Spain. And he says, Spain? I've never heard of Spain, where's Spain? Okay, so I call my dean, my dean of Study Abroad, and I say, Dean, I need to know protocol here. I have a 15-year-old student. He didn't know that, you know, airline wasn't included. He's young, I don't want to put any families in financial situations. I just think it's not a fit for him. Maybe he can go next year, it's not a fit for him. And she said, Claudette, Bob is your 15th student. If he doesn't go, nobody goes. Okay, so. Bob made it on the airplane. Bob gets off the airplane, and he looks like this. Hoodie up, ear pods in, face mask on. Now, granted, it is 2020, 2022, so having a face mask on the airplane isn't that bad. But he is, if anybody's here in education, you guys know Bob. Bob sits in the back of the room, Bob doesn't engage, he doesn't ask questions. So Bob goes through first week of Barcelona, exactly that. Doesn't engage, doesn't ask questions, doesn't talk to anybody else, just keeps to himself with his hoodie, his earphones, and his mask. So week goes by, and I get a time, I'm sitting next to Bob, I have a one-on-one opportunity. And I said, so Bob, how do you like in Barcelona? And I'm thinking in my head, he hates it, he hates me, he hates everything. And he says, Ms. Claudette, I love it. Never in my life have I ever left Napa. When I'm at home, we don't leave Napa. My parents have never taken me out of Napa. When I'm at home, all I do is I sit at home, and I just want to see the world. When I get back to Napa, I want to explore. And I'm telling you guys, I'm getting chills right now remembering that conversation because I just, we literally changed the trajectory of this 15-year-old's life. And this was a 15-year-old that I was going to deny going on this trip, but I think had the most impact of this trip. And so Bob decides that he's going to travel with us again, International Business in Paris, Summer 2023. He signs up, obviously this time he knows that airfare is not included. So I meet him at the airport. And I kid you not, if I saw Bob on the streets of Napa, I would have no idea who he was. He got off that airplane, he wasn't wearing a hoodie, he wasn't wearing his ear pods, and he didn't have a face mask on. As a matter of fact, he had the chest up high, was ready to see the world, and I was so incredibly proud of Bob. Because this is what we're doing, it changes lives, it matters. We make such an impact every single day in these students' lives. And I am so grateful that I had the opportunity to present this to you today, and I had the opportunity to be a part of these stories. So I just want to tell you, on behalf of the Mackenzies, on the behalf of the Bobs, and on behalf of our future dual enrollment students, Cameron, my son, we can reimagine our future together. And thank you so much for your time. I would now like to introduce to you, not my Study Abroad dean, but my dean, my Senior Dean of Career Education and Workforce Development, Dr. Douglas Mariotti. Dr. Douglas Marriott, thank you.
Dr. Masetti, Dr. Powell, trustees. I don't know how to follow that. I just, I want to take a moment to acknowledge the humanity behind the work that we get to do and to applaud Christine Tapia. She's a mother, she has children in the system, she lives in Napa, she's been at the college multiple years. She's the real thing. And Cladett Chateau, the same thing. They're the real people that help move it forward, so I just want to take a moment to applaud their work. And it's a privilege and honor to get to work with them. I will also share that, I just have 80 slides to go through. I'll be. And I want to applaud Lisa, our partner with Napa Unified School District, because I think she did a great job outlining what pathways are. I will say that thanks to the work of Dr. Powell last spring, we were able to host with, in partnership with the North Bay Workforce Alliance, a workforce policy summit where we looked at the labor market data to continue to align and refine our pathways. And that led to one of the last pathways we have, which is the Wine and Food Pathway, which Professor Chateau was very instrumental in working with our academic senate to get through. I will also share that I think the opportunity and beauty of working and living in Napa is alignment. And we want to align our pathways not only with our K through 12 partners, but with our adult ed partners. And so we want to make these transitions seamless for adults who might enter into a pathway and then want to transition on to complete a certificate or degree with us. We are open to them. We now have a transition specialist that's housed on our campus, helping adults make those transitions. Just across the way, there was a Resource Fair today, and we were represented there, and we value and appreciate those alignments. So the latest pathway we have is a Wine and Food Pathway. It focuses on culinary arts, hospitality management, viticulture and winery technology. And Lisa's numbers validated why we have this pathway. I'm excited about the work that's being done here. And I think it'd be important to also cite and invite everybody here to a groundbreaking that'll be May 17. It's our Wine Education Center. It's 75% funded with generous donations from the Wine Spectator. We're working in partnership with the foundation to fund the second part of it, that'll include more hospitality and culinary training. And I really don't have 80 slides, that's it. And you were great, I thought we couldn't have finished right after you, but that's.
We are incredibly excited to partner with Napa Valley College in our work focused on ag viticulture. This is a possibility, their partnership is a part of our K-12 Strong Workforce Program grant, and it aligns in the pathway, the Food and Wine Pathway. And these K-12 grants allow us collaboration between K-12 and community colleges as well as industry partners and organizations. The goal is really to look at a pathway and strengthen that. And so with this particular one, we've looked at ag viticulture and ag tech. Our LEAs work together to look at sequencing, programming, and I think the other incredible opportunity that we have is both of our organizations are embracing the world-class industry with actual experiences outside of the classroom where students can learn. And so Napa Valley Unified School District at Vintage High School is a breaking ground on our Agricultural Science Technology Innovation Center on April 15, so you all are invited as well. As a part of this, what this really means for students is currently we have ag science programs there right now. We have agricultural plant science, and then we also have our agricultural program that focuses on our FFA, students and their ability to work with animals, so ag animal science. And so we can enrich those pathways through this opportunity. It also allows our students to learn through local partnerships and partnerships with our college, having those hands-on, real-world experiences that we know are incredibly valuable. And then also expanding our pathways, looking at high-demand livable wage jobs that embrace our community and what's out there in our local economy. And we have the opportunity to do that specifically through looking at ag tech. And as Ms. Faith shared earlier, the opportunity to really see what problems is agriculture trying to solve right now. And partnering with Apple Swift to look at programming, to explore how do we solve those problems using technology through drones. We are grateful to our county and our city for approving our water sewage and fire suppression so that we can make that happen and really strengthen and expand some of these. So with that, we will pause at the end of this particular section.
Trustee Gracia.
Yeah, I was curious, many slides now have talked about the pathway K through 14 or what have you. What does the K through 5 part of that pathway look like?
Thank you, trustee Gracia. We are in the development phase for the K-5 pathway. We started with the secondary schools because we felt like that was the most critical need, given the fact that they'll be trickling out in the next few years. So we started with our secondary schools, and we'll be developing that TK to 5th grade pathway in the coming years. One school that is beginning that work is Shear Elementary, the K-8, which has just received a magnet grant, and part of their magnet grant is looking at career exploration. So that'll be a good pilot or test case for us as we develop what it could look like for our TK to 5th grade. And we do have other things that we're doing in terms of exploration in TK through 5th, whether it's the career fairs, the other activities that are happening in our county to help prepare students for their careers. Okay.
I'll add one thing to that. So we have our NVUSD leadership team focused on college and career readiness, and we strategically incorporated Director Manning and Janine Burt, who is in charge of our magnet grant, as was shared by Miss Andrew Jennings, around the magnet. And we do also have two elementary parents who are a part of that, as well as our partners at Napa Valley College, who also have their elementary staff here, their elementary students as a part of it. So having the opportunity to hear from some of our elementary parents through that leadership will hopefully help us look at what could that look like as we grow that TK 12.
Any other questions? Over here.
Here's one more second.
Right.
So we will close our focus tonight on dual enrollment partnerships by sharing a very special and unique opportunity that we have in Napa County. And that is New Tech High School, in partnership with Napa Valley College, is in the process of building an early college program at New Tech High School. And tonight you'll hear about the history where we really started this partnership as an innovative school at New Tech High School and how that's grown. And then also how we're launching that and growing that through 9th grade. I am incredibly proud to introduce Principal Avinav Dev, who is in his second year, has become a distinguished school under his leadership, and is incredibly innovative. And is one of those leaders that truly is committed to making sure that he knows personally every single student and is responsive to what they need. So with that, I will turn it over to Principal Dev.
Thank you, Director Eddy. Good evening, NVUSD Board, Napa Valley College Board, President Water, President Iverson, and Dr. Powell and Dr. Masetti. Thank you so much for having me this evening. So yeah, my name is Avinav Dev, and I'm the principal at New Technology High School. I'm very excited to be here this evening. New Tech High School opened as a small project-based learning high school here in Napa in 1996, with the goal to empower students, help them develop 21st century skills, have hands-on learning, real-world learning experiences, and provide specific supports to access college and career pathways. New Tech Napa is the founding school of the New Tech Network, which now serves over 350 schools across the country. We've had it busy last month gearing up for our mid-cycle WASC visit, which happened today. And we, along with Vintage High School, we were also recently awarded the 2024 California Distinguished Award, which we are very, very proud of. And that could not have happened without this community, which includes our partners at Napa Valley College. For over a year, we've been working as a New Tech community to update our vision and mission as a school, keeping our core values of trust, respect, and responsibility at the center of our work. On the screen, you can see where we are in our development, with some adjustments to come addressing our new early college programming. During our 2020 WASC cycle visit, some of the big themes that arose were the need for life schools classes for students, more career exploration, and incorporating a community-based project cycle into our practices. We continued that work as a New Tech community last year, partnering with Design for Emergence and relooking at what we wanted our school community to look like moving forward. We met with various stakeholders and held empathy interviews, talking to previous school leaders, current staff, our partners at Napa Valley College, internship mentors, students, and parents. From all this feedback, one of the biggest trends that stood out was the need for more college support. There's been a longstanding partnership with New Tech High School and Napa Valley College. And as I reviewed the number one recommendation from our design process and considered the need to address and improve the college component, three things stood out to me: resources, programs, and staffing. Knowing this, in an effort to continue this good work, top of mind was figuring out and brainstorming, how do we fund and sustain our college programming with materials and human resources? New Tech High School is a school that came from a community need and required community-based design. Communities are only as strong as their partnerships. And when I had the opportunity to take on this role as a high school principal, special education being my background, this dual enrollment programming is something that I would have loved to have growing up. And equity and access for all students was my biggest goal, and honestly, one of the reasons I wanted to move into this role and was excited about it. In my first few years in this role, I'm proud to say that the growth in systems we have developed has been incredibly outstanding. I really want to shout out a few different groups of people in Napa Valley College, including the Admissions and Records Department, Jessica Erickson's team. They have worked countless hours till 10, 11, 12 o'clock at night, even when we're having technical difficulties to support our students and making sure they can take the classes that they want to take. I'd also like to thank our Early College Advisory Committee, most of everyone standing behind here, sitting behind here, and highlight Christine Tapia. You've been the absolute best partner in this work as we're trying out anything we can do to support our students, so thank you. But this is the time right now to transform our post-secondary grassroots effort to a system-wide approach. Sorry, I'm going backwards. Oh, it goes like this, ah, cool, okay. There we go. Our design work backed up this need, and in March of last year, NVUSD and Napa Valley College applied for the California MCEC Early College Grant with the plan to start an early college program at New Technology High School. An early college program, there we go, an early college program or school is a small autonomous school or program that blends high school and college into a coherent educational program. In July of last year, we're very excited to find out that we were awarded that MCEC grant, and we started the work on building this program. Over the past few months, we have used grant funds to support professional learning opportunities, including attending our grant recipient conference in Southern California, a visit to TJ Owens Early College in Gilroy, and two more visits planned for the spring. We've worked with the marketing firm, Marketing Firm 440 Creates, who helps, who are helping us to, who helped to redesign the NVUSD logo and marketing materials a few years ago, and have been working to improve our enrollment and marketing efforts. Over the next year, the grant also strives to provide more education planning and counseling support, curricular resources, and a more robust team to support high school students using multiple learning management platforms. Our Early College Advisory Committee, consisting of many people here today, have met five times since October 2023. This team is hard at work, making progress on the nine areas of California's MCEC rubric. One of the main ones I always highlight, because it's top of mind for me, is student support and equity. We've been working with the DSPS office over at Napa Valley College to come do intakes on our campus that are actually happening this week. We're working backwards this year, 12th, 11th, 10th, and then 9th grade integration. I can share a little bit more in a minute. We want to make sure that New Tech High School continues to be a school where all students, no matter what their college and career aspirations, can be successful. So we want to be mindful of that as we're creating our pathways. The first box on the left, the dual credit pathway, where you see the high school diploma and the 12 college units, is a part of our graduation requirements right now and have been a part of the New Tech graduation requirements for a very long time. But as we have our first early college cohort coming in in the fall, we're excited to work towards these additional pathways, including a transfer pathway that will work towards an AA degree. A little bit of data on our incoming 9th grade class. This data is continuing to increase, and we are going to have a full cohort coming in for next year. Our enrollment is about a 20% increase from last school year at this time. And so we're very, very proud of that. And we're also really proud that student enrollment demographics continue to represent where it's been the last few years at New Tech High School and in NVUSD. Here's a sample schedule of a 9th grader for next year. We're still working on the course scheduling for dual credit classes. What you see in green are the Napa Valley College dual credit courses that are being finalized and we hope to offer. Over the last few years, we've really made some strides in our college offerings on campus, as well as through hybrid learning and asynchronous learning. This is what we know we're going to be able to offer at New Tech next year, and very excited about it, with quite a few classes still in the works. And I want to end today with an invitation to everyone to attend our Open House on April 25. This is going to be an evening to celebrate our current teachers, our current students. But we're also working with Napa Valley College and all of our other partners to come present at that time. We are also inviting our incoming 9th grade cohort to complete registration, understand what support's look like, start meeting faculty. Looking back at this slide over here, a few of these classes, we're hoping are going to be taught by our own current teachers that meet minimum qualifications, which is really exciting. But many of these classes have been taught by our college professor partners that have taught on the New Tech campus for a long time. So invite everyone to come join us. At that time, we're also going to unveil our brand-new mission and vision as a school at New Tech High School, including the early college programming piece. And it's an opportunity to just continue to create community. Our incoming 9th grade cohort consists of students from 14 different middle schools in and around Napa. We get to create that really amazing community at New Tech, and I invite everyone to come join us. And on that, I'll go ahead and hand it off to Dr. Moore.
So we've heard a lot of powerful stories tonight about how dual enrollment impacts students and create opportunities for them. And we wanted to end with future vision for how this programming can be expanded in our district. A little bit of context, this is from the California Community Colleges and what the chancellor has recommended for how we can reach future learners. And you can see that dual enrollment is one of the critical spokes of that goal. A couple of things that are relevant in terms of future planning is that, beginning in fall of 2025, there is a shift, for those of you who may have students who are getting ready for college, you may have heard that the two separate transfer pathways, IGETSI for the UCs and the California State University transfer pathways, had different requirements, still continue to do so for one more year, had different requirements which made it very complicated for students to understand, "Okay, if I want to keep open all of my options, I need to take this class for UC, that class for CSU, and make sure I have the class that works for both of them." It was like a puzzle piece. So starting in fall 2025, we will have Cal IGETSI, which is a singular transfer pathway. That's really important because it simplifies and clarifies, you'll see on the right, what is required for that transfer pathway. When we think back to the slide about the 9th grade, the focus of starting students in dual enrollment beginning in 9th grade, or even earlier if they would like, this becomes very relevant. this becomes very relevant because we want to, as much as possible, include courses that will fit the transfer pathway or their educational goal, whatever that may be, regardless of how it might change over time. We don't expect, as we heard earlier, students may change their idea about what it is that their ultimate goal is going to be. Regardless of what that goal is, if they are taking classes that are in alignment with the Cal IGETSI pattern, it keeps all of their options open, and these courses will count toward their degrees. So, that will become important as we start to expand our offerings, including the career technical courses that have been such a central part of what we've done till now. We will want to focus more and more and add in courses that fit within these required areas. And one of the things that is important for us to recognize and work toward is the minimum qualifications requirement for teachers who are teaching in these areas are defined for us and are outlined in this manual, the minimum qualifications for faculty and administrators in our system. And we don't have a lot of latitude here, so that's one of the challenges. For any of those GE transfer courses that I was just showing that are on the right, those are, for the most part, going to fit in that box on the left, the master's degree in the subject matter area. So, that's very important if there are high school teachers who are close to the master's degree, interested in getting a master's degree, that's very important to be planning for that because we see that the CCAP classes really do have the highest level of engagement, and that is certainly the direction that we want to help support. There are some classes that are among those that we offer that are career education courses, and some of those do have a bachelor's degree as the requirement and professional experience. But that's one of the planning pieces that we'll want to make sure to integrate into our expansion of dual enrollment. And that is the final slide. So, if you have any questions about those three brief slides, I'm happy to respond to those. Otherwise, I think the next part is the general discussion. So, for those slides, were there any questions? Okay.
Any comments?
First, we have to do public comments.
Oh, first, public comments. First, we have to do public comments?
Oh, okay.
Okay, sorry. I know, I know. It's hard for me to. Okay, let's see. Do we have any in-person public comments tonight? Anyone here? Nope. Okay, so, Mr. Michaels, do we have any public comments from our online audience?
There are no public comments online.
Okay, so now, we can move to general discussion. Yes?
I just want to thank Dr. Masetti and Dr. Powell for having this vision of a greater coordination of care. I knew all this was happening, but I didn't know to what extent. And having received the information on the MVC side is always important and impactful, but receiving it from both sides and the way you presented it, the way you really modeled your coordination of the dual enrollment programs was really inspirational, so thank you. I also want to suggest that next time we meet at our boardroom, because it's quieter, there's a lot of noise outside here.
I guess we're used to it.
And our chairs are better. And I do also just want to share that my, both my boys who are now adults went through the NVUSD system of schools, and my older son went to MVC, or NVUSD, and then MVC. He's twice exceptional. He has autism, and he's extremely brilliant in spatial systems. He had a 504 plan that was very helpful in NVUSD. I had to kind of get him back on track at MVC to get him the support he needed. Had he had that warm handoff and that system of support, it would have really improved his academic experience. He struggled through school all the way through. I feel like if he would have been able to have those conversations early on, the career exploration conversations, school would have made sense to him. School never made sense to him. He just wanted to be an adult and do what he wanted to do. And I'm just so thankful that this is happening because it would have really improved his academic experience. He's a successful launched adult, I will say, but it took a lot of support on my end. And I think that I'm just so grateful for all of you for developing this coordination of care and the system of support for our students and looking at them holistically, because it's going to make a big difference.
Thank you. Thank you for telling us that. Trustee Chu.
So, trustee Olson and I actually have very similar children, I think, in many respects, where mine is, my older one is also twice exceptional. And being in that space, you know, you get to hear about people who are needing support that's outside of what our regular public education can provide. And IEPs and 504s are great. I was just at a community advisory committee meeting yesterday, and the speaker that they invited was from UC Davis Redwood Seed Scholar Program, where they actually provide an in-house program for students with intellectual disabilities, and they actually onboard them into the real world through a college experience. So, I would like to suggest that perhaps, if this is going to be in a discussion about how we support our neurodiverse kids or our sped kids, that I think it would be a great opportunity to also involve our community college. I don't think that's available anywhere. I know that the four-year colleges, there are about 30 programs that have that, but I would love to see Napa Valley College in partnerships with NVUSD to have that discussion and really be one of the leaders. I think that'd be a great evolution of this partnership and the offerings for our two respective entities.
Thank you. And trustee Jankowicz.
Dr. Powell, MVC Board, Dr. Masetti, and the NVUSD and MVC instructional teams, thank you. I appreciate the collaborative nature and importance of this work. This is an example of our educational community working together to improve access and equity in our post-secondary opportunities. In line with how we at NVUSD have approached opportunities in learning, dual enrollment is evidence-based and can be a powerful tool in improving our student outcomes. The obvious, there were obvious benefits that were outlined in the presentation, and I thank you for outlining all of them. Where I see the potential for real positive impact is for student groups that have experienced underrepresentation and been marginalized in post-secondary education. I truly appreciated the awareness of developing, excuse me, equitable dual enrollment practices, and I think this is a necessary strategy for success for all of our learning groups. Knowing what is available, clear communication, and providing access will increase positive outcomes for our marginalized groups and can disrupt previous patterns, which I think will lead to powerful growth in the program. It is our collective role to support DE and engage in supportive policy that allows DE to prosper. Ultimately, this serves our workforce, our communities, and of course, the students themselves. DE is transformative work. It is clear that we will focus on alignment and refinements that will allow us to be equity-focused in designing programs that truly advance students, and I look forward to our community's future vision. I think this is a great example of both institutions holding themselves accountable to ensure this experience is available. We are expanding educational options here in Napa Valley, and so again, thank you for the collaborative partnership on behalf of our students.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Trustee Hart?
Well, mine is not written out ahead of time, nor is eloquent as trustee Jankowicz, but I would like to thank specifically Mr. Dev for being here tonight. I first met Mr. Dev, he was the special education teacher for my son when he attended New Tech High School. So, I actually have had the privilege of being able to see the benefit of dual enrollment firsthand. My son took a number of courses out at the college, which he thoroughly enjoyed, including American Sign Language, which despite me telling him Spanish would be a little bit more useful, he loved sign language and flourished at it, and that was one of his favorite things he did when he was in high school. So, I'm excited to see this partnership and this collaboration between the two educational, the two biggest educational entities here in our valley. So, I'm excited to see where this goes, and I'm hopeful that it's going to continue to spread throughout the rest of our schools and just become, you know, the leader in California for how this kind of thing should work.
Thank you. Trustee Gracia.
Yeah, I just wanted to echo the sentiments of my fellow trustees and say thank you for tonight's presentation. It was very informative, and I liked the opportunity to get the full picture, rather than maybe just part of the picture on one side or the other. It felt like tonight, we really got a bigger picture and more information on how all the pieces kind of fit together. So, I appreciated that. Thank you.
Trustee Weiser?
Yeah, just briefly, it's so exciting to hear about the synergy of this partnership. I want to thank the trustees from Napa Valley College and President Powell, Dr. Powell, and to see the teamwork between our teams was really amazing. I want to particularly thank our student trustee, Ben Colle, for your presentation. I think whenever we hear from students and we amplify student voice, we're getting the real deal, we're getting the real picture. And you spoke so passionately about, I wrote, I mean, it's pages ago, but wrote down, you know, it makes you realize that college is in reach for us. And so, that was just an incredible, authentic voice to bring to this presentation. And also, to see the amazing service that the college provides for our students when they, I didn't realize before that you were in that situation, Ms. Dora, of being behind and feeling like you were drowning. So, to hear from someone who presents as this amazing, successful, articulate, you know, powerhouse of a student, I'm so grateful to the college that you were there to help her and to partner with the district and to help her not only catch up, but come out feeling, you know, empowered and powerful and ready and even clearer in your vision for yourself. So, thank you for that in particular. I just think this is such a win-win. I'm so encouraged to hear about the, how attuned the college is and the high school partnership to the student needs and also to the student interests. I loved that graphic that showed just the iterative process of every year. It's going to be a little bit different, maybe, as we evolve, of what the student demand is, what the, you know, legitimately, what the staffing availability and logistics can, what we can manage. But that iterative process of the planning between the district and the college of what are our offerings going to be, I can only imagine how complicated it is for you, Christine, and for the whole team. But just to see, it's very exciting to think about all the different directions that this can go in response to our students as they are growing and changing and as the population is changing. And I guess I would just put in a plug to, I know you do have education courses at Napa Valley College, and I'm sad that education wasn't in the top five needs for professions, and the top five identified, certainly, I know as a former teacher, not the top five high-paying careers. But I do hope that we can also continue to partner because we do need that pipeline of high-quality educators to keep our systems going. So, that's my plug, but just thank you, everybody. It was really so cool to see it presented in this way to us together and from you together. So, what a cool meeting. Thank you.
It is a cool meeting. And another comment? To the right.
Finish with, okay. Okay. I was just going to say, if somebody want to go next, but I can finish here. I was just going to say that to not sound self-serving, but yeah, education, from zero to five and beyond to K through college, I think a lot of partnership should continue. And I think this room is showing two key partners, but there are more that need to be at the table, starting with really early education to now. And so, we're just really excited because we know this is a kickoff to a lot more system thinking in the bigger picture versus in our own little room and our own little spaces, but that how we're all very much connected with that. And yes, the teachers need to be there. And just, I just look forward to future conversations and diving into also the challenges we are facing independently in our own institutions and how can we align some of our strategies. We are building our own strategic plan at the moment and just finding those key alignments because if we're struggling, we know that that hurts, and then back and forth. And so, just looking forward to that, from the financial piece of it to the instructional side, to the HR side, to the business side, our facilities and so on. So, just all of this sounds great, but what makes it sustainable, too? It's a big concern. And but nonetheless, here we are, and we have to keep moving forward. And just really, really, I'm a big fan of the college. I grew up as an immigrant, and I was fortunate to be introduced to an upper bound program that took me to the college on Saturdays and in the summer. And that provided me city bus passes, and I would take two buses, but it would get me there, and but they showed me the possibility. So then, when we went to the student visioning that you hosted at the college that kicked off 300 or so of our students, it was just, I felt like a student again because those were the same classrooms that I walked in and was talked about college as an option. And then, having my own family be product of the Napa Valley College. So, it's so community-based, it's so personal at the same time. I'm very proud in a personal way to share the space with my cousin, Dr. Guerrero and I, because we know our grandfather would be very proud of us being in this room. So, just thank you for this, and I look forward to the continuing conversations that we're going to be having.
Student trustee?
I don't know what to say. That hasn't already been said so beautifully, but thank you for this opportunity. I think for me, as a student, to be in this role and see a lot of the behind-the-scenes work is truly transformative, to say the least. As an American Kenyan student, as I shared earlier, dual enrollment is a big part of our school culture. But obviously, as a dual enrollment ambassador, I knew a lot went into it, just not how much. And to just look at all of these, and to look at the numbers was something that really, as I was reflecting, gave me chills because I look at those numbers and I see students, and I see students that I've spoken to, students that have been impacted by the work that you all do, and it truly makes me happy. And as a graduating senior, I know a lot of my peers that are also graduating are excited to leave, but for me, I'm sad. I'm very sad, but also hopeful to know that you all are here doing this work, and I still have little siblings that are in the district, and I'm excited to see how this work will impact them. And I am just honestly amazed and empowered by you all. I can proudly say that the adults that work in this district are my favorite people on this planet, and you all just mean so much to me and inspire me so much. So, thank you, and thank you for the work that you all do.
Oh, thank you. Anybody from the college board?
I was just, I echo what everybody said. I think that goes without saying, now at least. But I really had a question for kind of everyone. Do we want maybe someone from the college, someone from the school district, in terms of, we've talked about all these great things, but what do we see as kind of a challenge? I think on the school side, on the college side, I heard a colleague from New Tech talking about working with Jessica Thomason at midnight to address like administration issues. Is there IT issues on the admissions side of things? I just, we don't need to pick. I know we all want to be respectful of each other. We're all hardworking, but I mean, what do we see as maybe some immediate challenges, long-term challenges? And maybe what are our challenges for maybe a student, for instance, too? But I think want to definitely support on the positive things, but thinking about the things that we can do, I think, at the higher board level. We could be looking at, trustee Gonzalez-Marias was talking about strategic planning. We're doing the exact same thing at the college as well. So, we're thinking about that, as well as budgeting and so on and so forth, hearing about those challenges would be instructive.
Yes, all right. First, yeah.
I'll start and then hand off to Christine. So, I think one of the challenges that we face is staffing. And so, looking for opportunities, looking for partnerships that allow our staff to move in their career and maybe meet some of those minimum qualifications. I think one of the other challenges we face in staffing is around career technical education and having industry, industries. and having industry partners who can then become staff and meet those needs. I think the other thing that was highlighted is just around like really ensuring that ninth, 10th, 11th, and 12th grade, how we support students with dual enrollment is really requiring us to look at our instructional bell schedules at New Tech High School, looking at that as we support the early college to make sure that students, given the campus isn't on the same campus as Napa Valley College, how do we give them access? Looking at continuing to monitor as Napa implements a bell schedule that allows for more opportunities for ninth and 10th graders that could potentially open up some opportunities for dual-enrolled classes are two particular areas of growth.
I would echo staffing and an expansion of student support, especially at the high school, you know? It's so much easier, I think, for us to bring the students to campus, but the reality is that they're not going to live there while they're dual-enrolled. And so how do we work on creating really a network of student supports at every individual high school so that they have support beyond what our ambassador program offers or what the support's beyond a, you know, MVC staff member who is at the high school campus maybe once a week only? Those are really the challenges. And also, the community college system and K-12 systems are two, like, they just are two very different, distinct systems, and putting them together has been a challenge. Like, you know, I think about scheduling relative to our academic calendars, which are currently now very misaligned, right? And so how do we figure in how to make this work, given the different requirements of the K-12 system and our community college system? I think this gives us a unique opportunity, though, to further collaborate, to look at our policies, look at our current, the architecture of our different systems, and see where we can find middle ground. You know, there are going to be middle grounds that are easier for us to navigate, right, and work together on versus the larger, you know, system-wide policy, the funding sources. So that's something that's already kind of in the works with our partnership with NVUSD, but, you know, the challenges persist, and that is really like what's stopping us from, you know, if we had no barriers to this, every high school student in this county would be dual-enrolled. But we're not quite there yet, but we are working on it.
In line with that, does dual enrollment affect ADA funding at all? Are there, does the state get involved with?
For us?
Does it impact it at all?
No.
No?
Does it increase our ADA?
Well, I was reading that there was state funding if there was participation in dual enrollment at a certain level, like X amount of hours, that the state then would assist in funding. So that would impact ADA. I don't know, I mean, you, I don't know. It just, it mentioned that there were, if we got to a certain capacity, that there was state involvement, and that wasn't mentioned, and I don't know if it's, you know, applicable here.
I don't know, Director Ready or?
We're not aware of that, but we can look into that.
I probably read it wrong. It could be operator error here, but I was looking through. I'll send it to you.
I would be excited if you read that, right?
Okay.
But no, it doesn't impact our, to my knowledge, I don't think it currently impacts our ADA. Also, I think it's important to note that it can't impact our staffing, and so this is in addition, too.
Okay.
That was one of my questions, is there, where does the Napa County Office of Education fall into that? Is there pieces that can help with the staffing from that side of it, too?
I'm trying to imagine ways that, what role they would play. I don't really see a county office getting involved in the staffing issue. Am I missing something?
No, I mean, our county office supports us with clearing credentials potentially and supporting in that way, but as far as our staff, even as we move towards next year, our career tech and teachers will move over into NVUSD, so currently, right now, it's only NVUSD staff. I don't know, I don't know of any opportunities through any county office to help support with that.
Okay, anything else? Great, I'll weigh in. This is usually, this is usually the point for those of us, for those of you who might watch our meetings, this is usually when I congratulate Assistant Superintendent Andrea Jennings and Director Ready for working so hard, so I can go out and take credit for everything they do. But even I don't have the brass to do that. This is clearly a team effort. You know, I'm so happy to have heard from Napa Valley College, you know, you have some great people working for you. We're in the people business, aren't we? And it's always very, makes me happy to see people who care about the folks they serve. I'd like to say to Principal Dev, you are clearly the right principal in the right place at the right time. Congratulations, and you're leading New Tech into a new chapter. This is great. I'm very happy about that. And today, I attended a luncheon, and Dr. Powell was the featured speaker, and he brought up something that really made me happy. He mentioned the for-profit colleges, and, you know, what we're doing here, what our team is going to do here is going to be heading, keeping students from falling victim to predatory lenders. You know, here is a low-cost way, practically free in many ways, for our students to pursue higher education without going into crippling debt. And I think that is something that we really need to bear in mind. I've always worried about that. And then finally, let's go back, let's go back to 22 years ago when my son was graduating, when the earth was cooling, step into the Wayback Machine, you know, and I look back. In those days, high school students were not encouraged to take college courses, they really weren't. And I think of a lot of students I knew who I think would have enjoyed high school a lot more if they'd been able to take college classes, if, you know, if it had been easy for them to take college classes along with them, particularly courses that counted towards graduation. So I think we're going a long way towards keeping our students engaged and ultimately improving a lot of people's lives. So this is great. I am very, very excited about this, and I want to thank everybody for working so hard on this. It's wonderful for our students. And now, you don't want to say anything, Dr. Masetti? Are you fine?
I'm great.
She's great. Okay, so now I just need a motion for adjournment.
Move to adjourn.
I'll second.
Once again, his favorite thing. Trustee Gracia makes a motion. We've got a second from trustee Jankowicz. All in favor? Aye.